On getting Shannon to question microphone, Mr. Flusman at the yes microphone, and then Seth Ryan, he could get one of the public microphones. Thank you. Mr. Chen.
Chen Chen, please take. I'm a moderator. Since this article is focused on assault weapons, so I got this paper today. Actually, can you point out which page each member is related to?
Mr. Robert, Madam Moderator, virtually all of them. They are merged here. We're talking about guns and assault weapons. If you look to the last page of the handout, the second, third pages of the handout, you'll see multiple points occurring to assault weapons. If you look on the first page, you'll see the mass shootings, which are assault weapon shootings.
Mr. Chen.
Again, actually, for example, the first paragraph, talking about 13,000 shootings. Can you give a percentage of shootings by assault?
Mr. Robert.
Obviously, a small percentage of 13,000. But if you remember the first map that I put up on the slide, those are all the 2016 incidents of killings in our cities and towns. And then out of that subset, there were, I think, 57 mass shootings. So if you multiply 57 by four and come up with a number, divide 13,000 into it, you'll get what percentage?
Mr. Chen.
Okay. Another question for the left man. If whether this armed crimes or not, are we going to have a commedity to start the discussion or just a woman?
Mr. Pata.
Madam Moderator, the board's likely have not taken up this discussion at this time, so we don't have an answer to that question.
Mr. Chen. Thank you. Next, Mr. Flusman.
Madam Moderator, it's David Flusman.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Flusman. I'm sorry.
I left my notes at home, and so mercifully, I knew the very brief points I was going to make were well expressed, I think, already. I would like to briefly add, for those that are thinking about voting no because of the inclusion of word "should" throughout the code in the motion, I think that is nitpicking to a degree that misses the overall point, and I would hope you reconsider that stance. For the points that we've heard on it boiled down to guns don't kill people, people kill people, one has to consider the big graph we saw, US homicide rate being anything from five to 20 times higher than other countries that are similar to ours.
That's what we do in night charts, you want to agree with that?
No, we have a much higher government rate, you're right. One has to say, well, if guns don't kill people, do we have five to 20 times the number of rotten people in this country?
Right.
Or does it have something to do with the prevalence of gun violence? The right to bear arms is not absolute. It is a conflict of terms of other rights. We as a community have the ability and responsibility to consider those rights and conflict, how we as a community are able to. Good thinking.
Thank you. Now a call on Seth Ryan. Mr. Ryan, you can give your address first, please.
My name's Seth Ryan, in the ordinary metro. So this is my first town meeting, too, so it's actually pretty educational.
Welcome to YouTube.
A little disappointing, I'll get into that a little bit. So many people have referred to Article 34 in this resolution form as a simple call for dialogue, and I wish it were only that. If the language were something more like, "We members of town meeting are concerned about criminal violence in our society and seek to understand the myriad issues and perspectives at play as to formulate some recommendations on behalf of our community to make it safer," that would be something that I think we could all get behind. And assuming dialogue and discussion, which everybody is interested, would be based on a fair, broad perspective. But that's not what we have written here. And I can't believe anybody hasn't said it yet. This is literally the cart before the horse. The resolution doesn't say that. Instead, it says that a very specific law, in fact, the incorrect law, needs to be strengthened, and that a retroactive term discussion be held to justify most back to that recommendation. If the original bylaw is any indicator, the outcome of the discussion is predetermined to ban things that are already banned and to require confiscation and destruction of personal property of law-abiding individuals. This is quite simply a subjective unfair tactic to cajole town meeting into making a political statement on gun control. And it's unfair to many stakeholders. It's unfair to illegal firearm owners, not only in Lexington but across the entire Commonwealth, who now could become criminals if this resolution is heeded. It's unfair to citizens of Lexington who've had no forum thus far to discuss the myriad other perspectives of quote-unquote gun violence, such as the efficacy of gun-free zones, the availability of mental health services for those with suicidal or homicidal tendencies, or the enforcement of existing firearms laws and proporcions of criminals. It's unfair to town meeting, whose, in my opinion, good name and faith is being exploited for the political glory of the future. And I just want to mention that, you know, I've emailed over the past several weeks a variety of different sort of alternative resolutions, but nobody had gotten back to me. And, you know, as I mentioned, your town meeting has disappointed me because I feel that especially your representative meeting, all voices and not just the, you know, the desires of the individual members. And lastly, it's unfair to the victims of gun violence, who will not be any safer by making law-abiding firearm owners criminals. The other thing I'd like to say is that the fact that one of the town meeting members just said that they have, you should vote in favor of this because of the way it makes people look upon Lexington is very concerning to me, that the politics, the national politics, which is really what this resolution is about, would instill that sort of idea. But I believe in town meeting, and I think you can do the fair thing in the end, so both of you are going to see this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm now going to call on Mr. Patake with a question. Mr. Alaskumadu at the yes microphone, and then Anne Brady could get herself to a microphone in the public area. Thank you. Mr. Patake.
Madam Moderator, my name is Vika Skinga.
I am so sorry. It's hard for me to see from back here, I apologize.
Okay. So, I, let me say, I was like, I don't hold a gun against anyone, but we are going to stop gun violence. My question to Mr. Robert is, has he given talk about the message that we are going to be sending to our neighboring towns, you know, by passing this resolution? You know, I'm sure it's going to be a positive message to positive people, or about people with a criminal mindset? You know, do you think when they take advantage of that situation, you know, when they know Lexington stops, doesn't let people use their guns?
Mr. Robert.
Madam Moderator, Lexington is the center of the universe. I think all the towns will try to do what we do if we do as well, and we have an excellent conversation during the next year. Let me point out that Lincoln has already had the discussion in its town meeting, an overwhelmingly passed motion, much stronger in some ways than we're trying to pass tonight. So Lincoln doesn't need any lessons, unfortunately, for Lexington on this issue, and I think there are other towns that would be emboldened by Lexington deciding to discuss these contentious and important questions.
Mr. Kinga.
Well, I think I landed by saying, you know, what about the violence that happens from the neighboring towns to Lexington?
Mr. Robert.
Madam Moderator, I may not have still understood the question quite, but it's true that guns owned by persons outside Lexington may find their way into Lexington and cause violence. We cannot, as a town meeting, have a conversation about that, but we certainly can have a conversation about what goes on within Lexington.
Right. We'll just disarm the law-abiding citizens.
Mr. Alaskumadu.
We'll just disarm you guys.
I want to point out that the purpose of the resolution is to have a discussion amongst the town meeting, not inside the meeting. It's quite simple. If you think we should have a discussion as town meeting and support this resolution, if you think the discussion should not be part of the town meeting process, then you may vote no. But I'm glad we're here today, we're discussing this, because this is really the function of town meeting. We can't say we don't care about this. So one point I want to make out is that there's been tremendous information came out as a result of this discussion that we're having, reading newspaper articles in the Boston Globe and the National Magazine. And just want to tell you a number of things that I found out about the gun problems in our state. So there's a problem with illegal weapons in the state. And as reported by the newspaper, these weapons tend to come from across the border in New Hampshire and Maine, and some of them from our own. So this is a problem. Another problem is that some of our gun laws are not enforced. For example, we have mandatory minimum sentences for illegal gun possession in the state, and this is rarely enforced. Another problem, when the police stops the vehicles for illegal traffic on the road, the officer has no good way, no good job whether a person has a weapon. And I can tell you, why is it proper stuff? Keep your hands on the steel wheel so that the officer does not get concerned, the officer will appreciate it. Another issue, when the police investigates a murder, it's difficult to trace the weapon of crime. The state tracks gun purchases, but does not track the actual guns. These gun purchases are self-important, but the record for database of the state are out of date. And in particular, we don't know the exact answer, the best answer to the question, how many illegal guns are in circulation, nothing about any of that. Gun violence, pretty bad in some of Boston neighborhoods, some other towns, has spiked up, central square and NYPD gangs, but we have nothing about that part of our discussion. Mass shootings, much smaller percentage of incidents, but has spiked up, mass shootings almost every one of them, as we still have in representation.
Fifteen seconds.
That's happened in communities like ours. Cameras have spiked, there's tremendous rules. So I urge you to support this motion, and I think it's important to have this conversation.
Thank you. And Anne Brady, please give your address first.
Madam Moderator, Madam Moderator. Ms. Brady, you're going to have to absolutely face that microphone.
Turn it on.
Can you just speak into it so we can test if it's on? Okay. There's a button on top, and pull it towards you until the green light comes on. It's a slider. Now, yeah.
Operating the microphones should be taught at every elementary school level.
We're going to bring another microphone up. Sorry, I'm not. Ms. Brady, I'm going to come back to you. Okay? Don't go away. Is it working? Okay, we're going to swap it out. Mr. Flusman with a question.
David Flusman, precinct six. I have a couple of questions. Hopefully, the first one is for Chief Corrigan, possibly the law officer who he has. The question is, over a period when we have had a federal and a state assault weapon ban, laws which attempt to do that, how many assault weapons have the Lexington Police enabled to conduct?
Chief Corrigan. Mr. Flusman.
The all of our questions are to answer.
I think he understands the question.
First of all, our question is, how many gun-related killings or woundings do we know in Lexington, over some reasonable period in the past? Certainly, I haven't heard of any in the last year, but do you know of any in the last five years?
Chief Corrigan.
Madam Moderator, killings of another individual, zero. We have had suicides by use of a firearm.
Mr. Flusman.
My final, my two year, my final question was, how many firearm suicides in Lexington?
Chief Corrigan.
No. I will give you last five years. We're going to give you our best estimate, three, probably in the last five years.
Mr. Flusman.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, I plan to vote no on this, even though I do approve of modifications to our federal and state gun laws to reduce the, say, the unused background check transfer of weapons around, but I do not find this particular resolution particularly helpful.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Brady, I think we have a working microphone for you now. Give your address first.
Madam, my moderator, Anne Brady, 10 Friday Road Drive. Thank you. As a representative of the following church in Lexington, I work with Massachusetts Coalition to prevent gun violence, to secure passage of chapter 284 of the Acts of Massachusetts for 2014, which is an act grounded to the reduction of gun violence. The law strengthens the counterfeits already scripted by laws, but did not change the restrictions on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, enacted in the state in 1994. The resolution proposed by Robert Rockford focuses on assault weapons. Those assault weapons, their restrictions are only a small part of the overall round state efforts. Massachusetts is one of seven states that ban assault weapons. Three of the states and the District of Columbia, however, use a broader definition of assault weapons. It is far more important to make sure that all of the provisions of the 2014 Massachusetts law are funded, implemented, and enforced. This includes ensuring that all transfers of guns are subject to national instant background checks, data collection of events used in crimes undertaken, and that measures are taken that could be played as part of this act to reduce the 60% of all gun deaths that are suicides. Also important in the future is to find a way to prevent guns that could be used in crimes in Massachusetts from being bought and avoided by the state, which do not have security. And to restrict purchases from Massachusetts to one gun a month in order to extend stronger to the law by banning others who do not have a gun themselves. The town-wide discussion, as proposed in the resolution, will make people aware of this kind of law and have greater understanding of what's still needed to be implemented along with areas of the revolution. I look forward to looking at gun use and to make unsafe people in the neighborhood a little bit.
Thank you. Now, I want to check in with Mr. Shartus and Mr. Chen, because we typically don't allow town meeting members to speak twice on a motion when there are others wishing to speak. I know in both cases, you all didn't use all of your time at the question microphone, so I'll allow a one-minute statement from each of you. So I'm going to call on Mr. Chen, Mr. Shartus, Mr. LaPointe, and then if Robert Roll could get to one of the microphones in the public area. Thank you. Mr. Chen.
Mr. Chen, please take. Initially, I want to offer amendments to this article. The reason I withdraw the offer is, when I write the speech for the offer, for the amendment I want, I contradict myself with the same reason for the, for the oriented motion. The core reason is, this motion is solely focused on the assault weapon, and will actually be speeding, and also, if it passes, will have a wrong message that a couple towns is gathering behind the assault weapon. And so I will, I will say, I will hope the conversation will continue, and will actively facilitate that, but we will set the correct scope and the range for the conversation.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Shartus, very briefly.
Madam Moderator, it's Vijay at Charlestown, precinct two. You know, we keep talking that we don't have any problem in Lexington, but I don't think the intention on Mr. Rockford was just Lexington, he wanted to start something that propagated in the whole country. And then now he started, you know, Massachusetts, no Lexington. Is that true? What was your intention for?
Mr. Shartus, you're not at the question microphone.
Okay. And I was going to say, yesterday, I was passing by the cemetery, and there was a guy praying. I asked somebody, "Who is he?" They said, "Why is he in Lexington?" And then I see the, the earth is starting shaking. I said, "We have ten seconds." They said, "No." I had our passengers rolling into graves because the changes from voting to resolution. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. LaPointe, any question?
I think that was our crazy guy, right? You think that was?
At least a couple of speakers have suggested that the reference to the Massachusetts General Law cited in the resolution may be incorrect. Could town council verify that this is a correct reference?
Mr. Bock.
I believe that the reference is chapter 131, or chapter 140, section 131m. I believe the firearm statute has a number of sections, and whether or not this particular section, I think somebody referenced it as the effective date and some other things. I don't have the statute in front of me, so I couldn't tell you exactly whether 131m or another section close by is the correct reference.
Mr. LaPointe.
Madam Moderator, since the reference is such an important part of this resolution, I don't see how we can vote on it without confirmation that it's the proper reference. And I would also like to see the text of that reference.
So, Mr. LaPointe, since this is a non-binding resolution, we can be a lot more relaxed about the way that it's written, so I don't see that as an impediment to town meeting voting on it, or to the selectmen deciding how they want to proceed, depending upon that vote. Mr. LaPointe. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Robert Roll, you have the public microphone. Give your address first.
Robert Roll, I'm a citizen of Lexington. Hello, everyone. I'm a Lexington resident living with my family, my wife, and three kids, in East Eastick Nine. I'm also a sportsman and a gun owner with 30 years firearms experience. I would like to urge you to vote no on Article 34 tonight. I'll be, I'll try to be brief here. While Mr. Rockford has pulled his original proposal to ban semi-automatic firearms through a town bylaw, a proposal which broke both state and federal law, and was unanimously opposed by residents in attendance at a board of selectmen meeting in March, by the board of selectmen themselves and by the chief of police in Lexington, he has replaced it with a resolution, which on the surface seems reasonable. It's talking about having a debate. The problem, and others tonight have made this point, the problem is that the language of the, the language and the place at which he's coming from with this resolution, evidenced by his bylaw to ban firearms, to seize private property without due process and destroy them, it's, it's clearly ideological, it's disingenuous, and it's not, he's not really asking for a true debate on the causes of gun violence in our society. And so that's really my problem with the debate, and that's why this has to be voted down. If it was coming from a different place, and was actually addressing the issue of gun violence and the causes of gun violence, such as criminal possession of firearms, illegal possession of firearms, such as mentally ill people having access to firearms, and more recently in San Bernardino, domestic terrorism. If this was a debate about how to stop domestic terrorism, or keep the guns out of the hands of the mentally ill, that would be a different, that would be a different situation. But that's not where this is coming from, and so I believe it's ideologically biased, and as I said, disingenuous. And I urge you to vote no on this proposal, and all others that come from the same place.
Mr. Roll, again, we are not debating the person, we're debating the motion, so I would respectfully ask you.
But they're one in the same.
About understood, but again, the point, the point stands, and it's been made several times, it was made very eloquently by Ann Manson, who was speaking the first, first up at the no mic.
I know. Continue.
That's it. I think we should focus as a town on our schools, on fixing and repairing our schools, maintaining our parks and historical sites, and continuing to make this community great, a great community in that sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to call on the member at the question microphone, and then the member at the yes microphone, Mr. Barnett, and, oh, excuse me, and then Leslie Sales. Leslie Sales can get to a public microphone. And, excuse me, before we do that, I'm going to call on town council, who has further information to your questions, to LaPointe. Mr. Bock.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We're trying to get the text of the statute up on the screen for you, if we can manage that electronically. Meanwhile, let me just try to read it to you.
Where's your PowerPoint?
Well, it's about a paragraph, so I don't know if it's very helpful. Chapter 140, section 131m, assault weapons sales banned, no person shall sell, offer, sell, transfer, or possess an assault weapon or large capacity feeding device that was not otherwise lawfully possessed on September 13, 1994. Whoever not being licensed under the provisions of section 122 violates the provisions of this section, whoever not being licensed under the provisions of section 122 violates the provisions of this section, shall be punished for first offense by a fine of not less than $1,000, nor more than $10,000, or by imprisonment for not less than one year, nor more than 10 years, or by both such fine and imprisonment. And for second offense by a fine of not less than $5,000, nor more than $15,000, or by imprisonment for not less than five years, nor more than 15 years, or by both such fine and imprisonment. This provision of, provisions of this section shall not apply to, one, possession by a law enforcement officer, or, two, possession by an individual who is retired from service with a law enforcement agency, and is not otherwise prohibited from receiving such weapon or feeding device from such agency upon retirement.
Mr. LaPointe, do you have any follow-up questions to that? Okay, thank you. So the member at the question microphone, please give your name and precinct.
Becky Barantine, precinct eight. Who you are, Madam Moderator, my question is for Chief Corrigan. And I'm wondering if the police department has an official position on this, or if you have a professional personal opinion on this?
Chief Corrigan.
Madam Moderator.
Chief Corrigan.
In early March, I spoke before the board of selectmen about whether, if this matter had been a bylaw, I had a position that I spoke to. I had made the promise that if this was changed through a resolution, that I would stand down. I had made the promise that if this was changed through a resolution, that I would stand down. What I meant by that is, this debate, which is being held by this entire hall, you're getting far more information than I can offer from my position. I would not offer a personal opinion. I keep those to myself in the position that I hold. Um, but I would stand by my statement at the board of selectmen meeting that I won't offer a statement as far as a resolution. This is really for, in my opinion, professional opinion, for you in this hall to debate and decide what you want the town of Lexington to do, and then I will help you do it.
Ms. Valentine. Here on town. Thank you. Thank you. Um, the member at the yes microphone.
My name is Shabila Mongol, I'm a community member, precinct two. I'm also a period physician and a public health advocate, and I wanted to offer a slightly different perspective today. Um, I work in the community and I conduct a lot of work with injuries, and my opinion tells me that when someone comes in with an injury, I'm required to ask what happened, how it happened, if there was a weapon involved or anything at all. And if I see that same person or several people with a similar type of injuries, I am required to look at preventing these injuries. And the first thing that we always do is look at engineering controls. Uh, if there's a way we can engineer out a problem, that's the first approach, followed by education, other methods, and then lastly, behavioral issues, looking at your problems to prevent the injury. Um, so, from that point, I want to also talk about the mental health issue that has been brought up by several people here, and, um, the mental health statistic says that one out of every five people suffers some type of mental health issue in a given year, and one out of twenty-five people suffer some type of serious mental health issue, and half of these people do not receive any treatment whatsoever. As a physician and who trained in the United States and trained in a couple other countries, I can tell you that we do not receive a significant amount of mental health training to diagnose the problems, to pick up these in our patients. Our healthcare access today is extremely poor. We get ten to fifteen minutes to solve a problem. We do not have time or space to look for mental health issues. We belong to figure out who's dangerous and who's not, and whether they own a gun or not. So, from that point, if you guys have a position, if I look at these injuries, persistent problems, it is a public health issue, and I feel compelled to act, and the first thing I always do is we try to do stuff that we can control. It's not always the optimal solution, it's not always ideal, but the journey of a thousand miles has to begin with a single step, it has to start somewhere, and I say that in review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mongol. Um, Mr. LaPointe, if you want to speak briefly, you've been to the question microphone, so we'll keep it for you.
Madam Moderator, Paul Pointe, precinct two. Um, I rise in opposition to this, uh, this resolution in this function because I believe it is fatally flawed in its very narrow construction. Frankly, uh, we as a community here in Lexington deserve a much broader conversation that embraces mental health issues, uh, services in our schools, services in our community. We have the opportunity to be a forerunner, uh, a leader, in the kinds of conversations that communities should have to address how to arrest this problem. Uh, in my humble opinion, it does not need to be focused on the sale, the transfer, et cetera, of guns. Uh, so I, I deeply regret that, uh, the resolution is as flawed as it is, in my humble opinion.
I respect that.
But I have no, uh, choice but to vote no, and to encourage my colleagues in town meeting to do the same.
Thank you, thank you.
To set the stage for a much broader and more productive conversation.
Thank you. And Leslie Sales, if you could give your address first.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Leslie Sales, and I live in Lexington, here in Lexington. Um, first and foremost, thank you to our town meeting members for your commitment and service to our town. Um, I just wanna start by saying I'm from Maine, and with that said, I have a family of hunters, and I grew up with guns in the house. I live here in Lexington, and I have good friends who own guns, and, and they have that in their home. Um, I just wanna applaud Bob Rockberg for bringing it to our attention. Maybe you didn't go by it right, um, there's due process for learning here in Lexington, I could tough that to practice till, but he brought it, and we're here, and I'm forever thankful for that, because it's on our minds, um, the massacres that are happening in our country. And, yes, we're lucky, this is happening here in Lexington, yes, and let's try and prevent that. So with that, I'd just like to say that having an open dialogue is really important. I would love for everybody on whatever side you sit on to come to the table and discuss this. Um, and I think that we can do this, no matter what the outcome of the vote is tonight, I think there's a commitment to have a conversation. I, I want to say that our nation has become so polarized on so many issues, bipartisan government is getting in the way of getting anything accomplished. In Lexington, we can agree to disagree, but perhaps come to the table with open minds, listening to each other, and so that we can find a common ground. If anything, we need to become more educated about the gun ownership laws that already exist and reforms made in Massachusetts in two thousand and fourteen. For example, what is the difference between semi-automatic and rapid fire? What is allowed? Can anyone have a gun by going to a gun show without background checks? Can they do this in Massachusetts? Is the background, is it hypothetical? Is the background check process as tight as it can be? Then we can ask ourselves if there's more we can do here in Lexington to protect our citizens, especially our youth. Is there common ground? I believe there is, and I think we can find it here in Lexington if we can find it anywhere. Lexington is home to the most forward-thinking, intellectual, and compassionate people. We are strong, we are independent, and proud of our revolutionary forefathers, and we have the responsibility to make this world a better place for all. Yes, guns are weapons and people pull the triggers. We will never, however, eradicate domestic violence or mental health in our society. Much of it is undeserved, yes, but we will, once again, not always diagnose where, where it lives. There's a thirteen-minute head talk given by Dan Gross called Why Gun Violence Can't Be Our New Normal, which speaks to this very issue. I urge you to take seconds to look at it and come again to the table with an open line. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a call on Mr. Rockberg at the question microphone? And, uh, then could Dan Gannon get to a public microphone?
I appreciate that you've honored me this article as properly characterized it as a non-binding resolution. Which effectively means that after all this dialogue and discussion, even if this lies closely to the resolution, the board of selectmen doesn't have to do anything, which is not. So, my question to the board of selectmen is, if this resolution, you're asking us, you want to see insight as to how you might go about making a decision as to whether or not the townwide selection, uh, as in the article, to make a vote on this?
Mr. Patta.
Madam Moderator, and I said before, the board of selectmen have a lot of these issues, so I can't give you specifics, but I can tell you that the board listens to town meeting and has generally followed the resolutions put forward by town meeting by complying under requests. So my expectation is that we would proceed to find a way to bring a community conversation, uh, initiate that as requested.
Mr. Hepburn.
One more follow-up, Mr. Patta.
Mr. Hepburn, I'm having a trouble hearing you. Get a little closer to the microphone.
My apologies. Is that better?
Little.
Okay. Uh, follow-up question then is, we heard beginning of this, uh, discussion, that the board had voted already and come up with two, two split, uh, so, uh, two, sorry, or two against this resolution. Can we hear from the two who are against this resolution maybe a little bit why they feel the way they do now?
Mr. Patta.
Madam Moderator, we do not have a report. Uh, I can turn to my colleagues and let's get everyone to.
Mr. Kell.
Excuse me, Madam Moderator. I was a no vote, and my primary reason was not because of being able to see the value of a community conversation. I'm quite familiar with community conversations on a number of subjects over the years. This has every bit of the same value that others have. My feeling is that that opportunity exists through perhaps the legal women voters or any other avenues that we've used in the past. My problem with supporting this resolution is that I felt it was outside of what, I guess I would like to see the involvement of the town meeting. Um, but also, there's something about the proposal that I find very uncomfortable or unsettling with in this town. It has to do, perhaps, with my history and this town's history. I don't discredit the intent of trying to address the concern that's being shared here. I just think it steps on a ground that I'm not comfortable with. I think the resolution should be defeated. I think an opportunity will find itself in other ways. I don't think this issue will go away. I think it will be addressed, and I think it can be addressed in a more appropriate avenue.
Thank you. Any other members of this election who'd like to speak? Ms. Barry.
Uh, I was also the other no vote at the meeting we had in March. Um, we voted unanimously no against the bylaw, and it was gonna be a resolution that night. Um, some of my thinking that goes into it is we do have some of the strongest gun laws in, in the country. Um, there are some flaws, I feel, within this resolution, and I really do feel we need to have a complete, community-wide conversation. The conversation that's taking place here tonight is wonderful and robust, but we are truly not incorporating all of our neighbors, and their voices need to be heard, and we need to be respectful of the voices that we're hearing, and it's very concerning to me that at times, through the emails that we have gotten, and the phone calls, and the letters, that we are not being as respectful to each other, no matter which side the issue is on.
Mr. Hepburn.
I thank you both, your Madam Moderator, and your Madam Moderator.
Mr. Cullen.
Yes. Uh, I'll speak. I was the selectman who said that I wanted to wait to hear what the discussion is. Uh, I was in contact with, uh, Bob Rockberg, I think, just about at the beginning when he was, um, uh, going to present an article, uh, and, uh, I certainly expressed my opinion at the time that, um, a lot of what he was going to put into the bylaw had been preempted by the state, and that, uh, the, if we had passed the bylaw, it probably, I'm not sure, but I'm quite sure, that it would not have been approved by the attorney general. Uh, he consented, as we can see today, to have a resolution. Uh, I am very much in favor of having, uh, a townwide, uh, discussion about this whole issue. I can tell you that at this moment, I certainly do not believe that it's up to the selectmen to set up a committee, a, the town committee, uh, which will be, uh, uh, subject to the open meeting law and postings and so forth. I would like, as we are tonight, to have a townwide, uh, resolution. While, uh, I'm leaning just a little bit at the moment to yes, uh, however, I want to be on record that this idea of having a committee, uh, I don't think it's up to the selectmen, and I think Mr. Rockberg has every opportunity to have people, not from all sides, and it doesn't have to come from the selectmen.
Mr. Hepburn.
Uh, I want to thank the board of selectmen for being so candid about their views. It leaves me wondering whether or not this will be an issue. That got the board of selectmen, after all said, uh, but certainly I hope that the town engages in some way in meaningful dialogue that I think we all want. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dan Gannon, if you could give your address first. Thank you, sir.
Uh, my name is Dan Gannon. I'm a resident of Ole Miss, Massachusetts. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak at your town meeting. Um, first off, before I get to my brief statement, uh, someone earlier referred to DC versus Heller, and they paraphrased it very poorly, and it is a very important decision, and I think everyone should know it, so I'll read it directly. Uh, the Second Amendment protects an individual right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in the militia, and to use that arm for traditionally lawful purposes such as defense within the home. It is not limited to the home, it is all lawful purposes. Um, even as a young student growing up in Lowell, I understood the significance and history of our region and the country. I appreciate that I could take a field trip thirty minutes down the road and visit the birthplace of our country. But now, as an adult, I've only been able to make it to the area for the same reasons for those who did came before us, to fight tyranny. Couple of years ago, when the federal government shut down the Freedom Trail, I packed my family in the truck, into the truck and headed down here. As we walked along the Freedom Trail, we moved every closed sign we came across on the, to the side of the trail as they were blocking people's access. It was great to see so many others riding their bikes and walking on the closed Freedom Trail, and to give my kids history lessons in the place they happen. And now here I am today, speaking against an unconstitutional move on firearms. The gun control issue here in Massachusetts lately is among the main reasons why we did not implement a democracy in the Constitution, we implemented a constitutional republic. In a democracy, the rights of individuals are up for a vote and can be suppressed by the majority. In a constitutional republic, individuals have inalienable rights that cannot be voted away, as the rights of minority are the most precious of all. I will stand with the people of Lexington through this entire process, as we are going through the same overreaching policies in Lowell. It is important that we all stick together, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, call on, um, Ms. Colburn, and then Mr. Barnetti.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Kate Colburn, precinct four. Um, I stand to address exactly the issue that three of the electmen just voted about, and I believe that in order for this community conversation to be meaningful and non-circular, the board of selectmen should be involved and convene it. Um, while I appreciate the legal women voters' willingness to convene the conversation, um, it would not carry the weight of the selectmen issued ever. Whatever the outcome of the townwide discussion, if it's convened by our elected leaders and if the participants are accountable to the selectmen, we're more likely to engage a diversity of opinions and realize time and resource. But that's another reason I intend to vote yes. Thank you. And Mr. Barnetti.
I'm Mr. Barnetti, precinct three. Madam Moderator, I have a more question.
Okay, so Mr. Barnetti is looking to see if his fellow town meeting members are ready to close debate. So, all those in favor of closing debates, yes. I just wonder if, if you know if citizens who are waiting to, uh, to speak, I think, well, I, I see town meeting members waiting, and also, I still have citizens on my list, that is correct. How many citizens are waiting? Um, well, that you know, that I know that have identified themselves to me, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten that have identified themselves to me, and, uh, clearly there are others. Thank you very much. Madam Moderator. Excuse me. I, I can't tell where the voice is coming from. Mr. McKenna.
I call for an electronic vote.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So, uh, we're gonna take an electronic vote on whether or not to close debate. So, everybody get your electronic voting device ready.
This is the second video that I've shot of this evening.
All those in favor of closing debate, press one. All those opposed, press two. And all those abstaining, press three. Make sure you get the feedback that indicates that your vote's been received.
First video actually ran pretty much out.
We have ten seconds left to vote.
And now we've got, uh, just about forty-eight and a half minutes.
Fifty of your votes. Are you sure I'm not, I didn't take a voice vote?
Eight abstained, passes. Eighty-four yes, eighty no, eight abstained, the motion passes. To close the debate.
In this matter, eighty-four having voted in the affirmative, the eighty in the negative, and the abstaining, the motion to close the debate carries. So, according to our bylaw, Mr. Rockberg, you have up to three minutes left as the maker of the motion.
Madam Moderator, we've had the kind of debate tonight which we should continue. So, I urge a vote yes on the resolution because it's clear that there are many points of view, we ought to hear them all, and I echo Kate Colburn in suggesting that, I said when I made initial remarks, that I hope the selectmen will take charge of this process and
I made initial remarks, that I hope the selectmen would take charge of this process and appoint a committee of town meeting members and citizens who could hold hearings, open meetings, law or not, and would engage in a very detailed process of the kind we had many, many years ago, before some of you were in town meeting, when there was debate about closing the small schools. We had three or four committees set up by the school committee, we had large debates in town, we held hearings, we held reports. I think that's what we should do now, and I hope that is what the selectmen will do, and I provide it, of course, if this motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, I want everyone to, again, pick up your electronic voting device. You'll be voting on the motion under Article 34 offered by Mr. Rocker. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. And all those abstaining, press three. You may have to press a second time. Make sure you get the correct feedback on your votes. 10 seconds left to vote. Repeat your votes.
So Lexington just hung themselves. 105 yes, 62 no, nine, five abstained. And that concludes this video. Everyone's packing up and leaving.
In this matter, 105 have to vote in the affirmative, 62 in the negative, and five abstaining, the motion carries. I want to sincerely thank everyone who came out tonight to be-